... student flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All this meeting, the Westbury City Council, the order roll call, please.
Christie?
Here.
Crowder?
Here.
Hightmeier?
Here.
These?
I'm here.
Here.
Need to perfect and approve the agenda. Still move?
Support.
Motion of support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowder?
Aye.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
These?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Here.
I mean.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda, item number five, we're gonna take it off. Need a motion to approve.
Motion.
It was amended.
Second.
Motion of support, approve consent items one through four and six through nine, which are the minutes from regular city council meeting on February fifth, twenty twenty. Approve a liquor license renewal for Southeastern Community College Foundation. Approve payment shot in curse, approve payment of Striker Medical. Approve payment to Dave Bazin Electric, approve payment Center State International, approve payment Collision Center, and approve claims list as presented in the amount of one hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-five cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hightmeier?
Aye.
These?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff report, Stan.
I've been working with the Burlington engineer and Burlington Public Works Director. They're doing a project on West Avenue. It's called a dowel rod retrofit that's got, you know, how that's humpy and bumpy. They're gonna pull those, pull those slabs down and they want, our Gear Avenue from Division South is starting to get just about as bad and they wanted to know if we went in on that project with them and so I told them to, that, figure out what it would cost us and we're looking at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand for our share. We've got that money left over from our street projects, TIF money that we could use to spend that. We have to run it by the bond attorney to make sure that that kind of a project's okay, but that's gonna be as cheap as we can do that and, at staff today, Mike said he noticed that that was getting worse and worse all the time too, so it'd be a good chance to get that fixed and leveled out. I had to Google what that was, so Google dowel rod retrofit and they'll see exactly what kind of a project it is. It looks like it's a pretty innovative, cheaper way to, rather than tearing it up and putting new pavement down to, to level out those humps between those slabs of concrete, so I'm working on that. When officially we'll have something, right? We're caught, we're talking to the bond attorney on Friday and I, I think they're start, they wanna do that this spring, so I'll have more later on that.
If you drove that stretch on West Avenue, buy the nursing homes there, that's kinda what Gear's starting to do, so might be a time to get it fixed. Anything else? Do I have anything for Dan? Mike?
Only thing I have is just let everybody be aware, there'll be surveyors in town tomorrow if weather permits for the Houston project. They're gonna start doing surveys, so if somebody questions you why there's trucks and people walking up and down the street, that's what's gonna be going on.
Anything for Mike? Jesse?
Uh, we've been staying pretty busy on the police department side. We've had an issue over in the Spring Street part of town. We did do a search warrant on the residence, his vehicle. He was, uh, the owner of the residence was placed under arrest for several charges and got a little bit of a tussle with him yesterday afternoon, but we got him detained and taken to jail, but I've had several text messages and people on the streets thanking us because we've had, been receiving a lot of complaints about traffic, a lot of traffic through a dead end street, so I was doing stationary patrol and got one of the cars yesterday and, and went from there, so.
Anything for Jess? Sean?
Got a couple, people were parking in the yards, that's been addressed and they're not in their yards anymore. I was doing, starting to canvass the alleys with the snow gone and everything and seeing what people have laying in there. I've been picking up a few addresses that they'll be getting notices to take care of their items in the alley that shouldn't be there. On the fire side, the nine-one-one board. We finally managed to agree how we were gonna sp- uh, spend money for new radios. West Burlington was supposed to receive forty-five thousand, uh, the fire department, and we came in well under that and it managed to replace all our portable radios, so now all our portables and mobiles have been replaced and upgraded with the latest and greatest. All the other departments followed step with us on what they got for portables as well, so they're working real well and everything.
And may I have anything for Sean? The new radios, are they the high frequency stuff?
They are P twenty-five compatible. We're still running the VHF and everything, you should be able to pick it up if you have a scanner. We have not, we're not gonna switch to digital on the fire side.
No problems though, anywhere in the?
With these radios, we've had, well, since we switched to Kenwoods, we, this was back under Chief Heim, uh, in twenty thirteen, I believe it was. We had fewer problems with the Kenwoods and then these newer ones have better technology. We're getting a lot better reach, transmission clarity. So yeah, we're having, good luck with them, real good luck with them.
Kelly, you got anything? Wesley? Kathy?
Just wanna thank Mike for wrangling the best deal he could get for the streets.
Andy?
Not sweet.
Grace?
I'm good.
Well, good. Okay. Well, this time we got a couple of visitors here and Jeremy and Della here from Greater Burlington will give us a little update.
Just take one.
Run out on the end, I'm sorry.
We're good.
I'll pass mine down.
There's plenty of that one, that was the other one.
I took math at West Burlington High School, so. One plus one.
Well, good evening to the council and, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, uh, for all of you to just give you a brief update. Again, my name is Jeremy Hess, I'm Director of Economic Development at the Greater Burlington Partnership and, uh, thankful for the partnership that we have with, uh, the city of West Burlington and, and, and all the things that we've got going on. Just wanted to briefly come to you tonight. I'm gonna share a few things, uh, after I introduce Della here. Uh, Della's our new CEO, some of you have met her, uh, prior to and, uh, but wanted to just give her an inch, uh, an opportunity to introduce herself and then, and share a little bit and I'll, I'll, I'll wrap up or something like that.
Okay. Good evening, Della Schmidt, it's a, a pleasure to be in front of you again. Some of you have been, uh, elected and sworn in since last time I was here, so congratulations on your candidacy for your council, because I look forward to working with you. Uh, I have been in, uh, the West Burlington.
In Burlington area now for.
About seven months, uh, and, uh, still needing my GPS to get around once in a while. We've got a lot of roads that aren't straight, but, uh, for the most part, am settling in very, very well. Uh, we are very delighted to be, uh, initiating a lot of new workforce initiatives under the Talent Pipeline Program, which I know you folks are familiar with to some degree or another. Jeremy's going to talk about, uh, some of those, uh, but one that we have piloted here in West Burlington recently, uh, with Amy Ryan at the middle school, uh, is a program called CEO in the Classroom and I've distributed a, a copy of that PowerPoint. Did you all get one? Did it make it all the way down? Okay, good. And so, uh, it just kinda gives you a sense, uh, but this is a pilot project. We were delighted that, um, super, Superintendent Lisa Bames and Amy Ryan were willing to, um, open up some classroom time and let us pilot, uh, something, uh, like this to get feedback from students, uh, and from teachers as to what they felt about the impactfulness. If we continue to get, uh, good feedback as we reach out to other schools to see if they would like to have us come in like West Burlington did, uh, then we will look at training business executives in the area to go in and deliver this program. Uh, it is specifically targeted at eighth grade students and the messaging is, say eighth graders, we're kind of drawing the end of the school year, you're gonna be freshmen in high school this fall, you have four years of high school to make really good decisions to kinda set you up for your transition into adulthood after that. Uh, so that has been going, uh, very, very well. We do have a Workforce Advisory Council, uh, that we pulled together in about September or so, uh, and the Workforce Advisory Council is made up of higher education, H-12 education, and private sector employers. And so, um, West Burlington is well represented across all of those spectrums. And that Workforce Advisory Council is the think tank that Jeremy and I take our programming to, run past them and get some ideas from them, uh, as to how to, oh, sharpen up what we're doing and be that much more impactful and redirect some of our efforts if needed. So that's kind of my snapshot, I'll turn it back over to Jeremy to talk about some other things that we're doing in the workforce arena.
Sure, and I, I'll just touch on that, that Workforce Advisory Council. One of the things that, the first thing they suggested that we do was put together a project we called AIM, which is Asset Inventory Mapping, uh, which, a lot of times we get before a committee or a group of educators or concerned citizens and they're like, wow, we really wish somebody was doing this amongst this population of students. And, and almost every time someone raises their hand in the back and says, you know what, we, we've been doing something like that for two years. And so, first thing we had to do was just kinda take a broad look and say, who's doing what, towards what population groups, so that we don't have, uh, missed, uh, students or missed, uh, areas, uh, so we avoid duplication, um, and then of course the goal is to find out what's working really well with a certain group of students or a segment of, uh, of our citizens and then, and how do we pour into that and, and, and pump that up? So that's one of the, one of the great things that's come out of this, uh, Advisory Council. So, uh, we heard from you, we heard from our employers, um, uh, last year that, that the talent issue, um, and skilled workforce is just, it's, it's a growing concern, um, and so, um, in response to that, I've got in front of you, uh, I'll spec- specifically ask you to just kinda pay attention to the things that are upcoming. Uh, wanna just briefly go over those, the Southeast Iowa STEM Fest that's held at SCC, that's this Saturday, um, it's roughly two thousand kids, uh, and their parents, they come in, they get their hands, they get to mess with stuff, they get to, uh, you know, hands-on activities to kinda fire up their little science synapses and that's a very successful event that's happening this Saturday. And then later on in March, we've got the fifth and eighth grade career fairs, uh, great participation from, uh, West Burlington, uh, businesses, um, just talking to these kids about, these are the kinds of jobs that we have in our area, these are the kinds of skills that you need and just piquing their interest. A new one this year is, uh, there's a student job fair that's gonna be held on March twenty-fifth. It's, it, it began as a, a way to showcase our, our students graduating from SCC, uh, they're gonna be graduating in May, so how do we get our employers? We want those kids to stay local, we want them to stay in our businesses and in our communities, so, um, putting businesses with those job applicants, but we're also operating, opening it up to high school students, um, and we want to see the opportunity of high school students taking good paying, uh, jobs that are in great demand right now in our, in our local industry and, and businesses. So that's happening on March twenty-fifth, we have great participation on that so far. A couple of other things, we've got the tater toss catapult competition, which is, uh, again, mostly a way to just engage students, our local, we have local businesses that'll help the, uh, kinda coach them through, they're not actually tossing taters, they're golf balls or ping pong balls or something else, but, um, just, it's, it's another touch, there's no, there's no magic bullet to any of this, there's no one program, it's just multiple touches and multiple ways, uh, across all, um, of our students to, to, to engage them in thinking, uh, of future careers, so, um, you know, those, those are the kinda things that we have upcoming, uh, I, we wanted to share and then, lastly, I'll just close with, um, you know, we, we have, uh, a workforce issue, uh, right now, but economies are cyclical and so we can never take our eye off the, um, the traditional side of economic development, it's always been business attraction and job creation. And so, those efforts continue, we continue to work projects, uh, working three projects right now that have, uh, West Burlington, uh, as, as, as a landing spot. Um, we also continue, if you were to, uh, go just not far from here to the former Raider Complex, um, and as you know, the, the, our organization owns the, uh, the Raider Complex and thirty-two acres around it, we've got, um, Four Seasons, uh, is out there right now, crunching concrete, scraping the ground, cleaning it up, getting it, uh, more presentable, more marketable, um, but we continue to work towards making that, uh, uh, instead of just idle land that's sitting there to attract business, attract jobs and, and, and get some, uh, some activity going on in there, so, uh, if any of you need a large concrete building, please speak with me afterwards, so. Anyway, happy to answer any questions that you might have, um, at this time.
Do they have any questions?
Anything you need from us right now?
CEOs in the classroom are thirty under thirty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're, uh, we're always interested in any individuals that would, um, like to be part of the Workforce Advisory Council. It's not a committee, it's not a board, it's an advisory council, so they meet periodically, uh, so it's an easy group to be on, um, and we are looking for, uh, executives who would be interested in being trained in the CEO in the classroom material. Uh, the other initiative that Jeremy just, uh, touched on, uh, we're working on building a speakers bureau, we've called it Thirty Under Thirty, and I kinda say that's 'cause we have to call things something, so when you talk about it, people know, uh, it doesn't mean that people have to be exactly thirty and under, and it doesn't mean it has to be exactly thirty people, uh, but we are roughly trying to attract about thirty people who are young professionals, train and equip them, uh, we're working with Carolyn Farley and the folks at Iowa Works, and we're actually gonna train and equip them and then communicate to our local schools that the speakers bureau is available and will have profiles of what these folks are available to speak on. The emphasis will be either, uh, soft skills or work-ready skills, uh, and the other one would be direct career correlation, so maybe taking an engineer and putting them in with a math class, or taking a chemist and putting them in with a science class and talking about how, what they do, um, is, uh, applicable to what students are learning in the classroom. So those will be the two areas and we are still actively recruiting. I believe that we have about a dozen individuals so far that are starting to go through that training, so I've got, you know, not quite fifty percent where we're wanting to be. Uh, we hope to pilot that this spring before school's out, have a couple of our young professional speakers go in and test the waters in classrooms, so that we have the summertime, uh, to do additional training and fine tuning before we kinda roll this out this fall. So that would be an area, um, councilmen, that, uh, we could use some help on, is if you're just aware of anybody who would fit that profile, and it's across all industry types and careers. We're not necessarily looking for only young professionals that have four-year degrees, um, but, uh, individuals that, uh, have, um, an interest in talking to students about in-demand careers.
This, uh, CEO in the classroom, is this just a, a one-day deal or, when you, or is it spread out over several days or, or weeks, you know, you might have them for an hour one day and then next week you might have them for another hour or?
CEO in the classroom is a one-time presentation delivered by an executive using that, um, PowerPoint to keep them on message and then they have lots of opportunities to, um, add in their own, um, flavor and interactions and personal stories. Uh, and then as far as how it's scheduled, when I was recently in, um, Amy Ryan's classroom in West Burlington, she had me there on a Monday and a Tuesday, one week and then the following week I was back again on a Monday and a Tuesday, so that I got all the eighth grade students over four visits.
It's a really neat process to watch, I've, I've witnessed it multiple times and the, the kids are presented with a budget and you have this job that pays this wage and, and here's your budget and the budget's short, you know, they're, they're short five hundred bucks and they come up with all kinds of ways to, how to make up that shortfall, you know, the guys are like, we don't need soap, we don't need deodorant, uh, wha- wha- but, but just getting them to think of, what if I pursued a certificate, what if I pursued some kinda further education so that instead of making nine bucks an hour, I'm making seventeen bucks an hour and then things start to work, you know, and just getting them to realize that, you know, and, and have that frank conversation that not everybody's wired to run out and get eighty thousand dollars worth of student loan debt for a degree that's not in demand, so it's, it's just a really good eye-opening conversation with the students to getting, that, that maybe their parents should have, but they're not having, or the counselor should have and they're not having, but someone needs to say it, so.
With workforce development, um, the ex officio on there, on the board, and I've been kicking around the idea, you know, each month they, they tell us, you know, this is how many jobs are available in Des Moines County, Henry and Lake County, this is, you know, and it's, it's always in the hundreds, you know, sometimes a little over a thousand jobs that are available, and I'm sure you've seen the numbers too, but what I'm gonna bring up at the next meeting is, I'd like to see what those jobs are. I'd like to be able to say here, you know, when somebody comes into City Hall and is looking the better themselves, well, here, here's a list of jobs that, you know, manufacturing, service jobs, you know, whatever, and instant, uh, you know, people don't wanna really go over there sometimes, they like to find out things other ways and I, I'd like to know what those jo- actual jobs are.
There should be a way to sort that data because I know that job list that you're talking about, it includes anesthesiologists, it includes, you know, somebody washing cars or whatever, whatever the two extremes are, but, but, but what is in that, that middle section that, that people could really apply themselves to, so.
Mayor, if I may, I'll, uh, direct your attention to slide ten and eleven of that PowerPoint and I know that font is really small, uh, I could certainly, uh, provide it to you in a PDF or something so you can see it a little better, but those particular slides are actually based on in-demand jobs, uh, in Des Moines County.
Oh, okay.
And so, um, that's not to say that they always have a job posting right now, but they are the most in-demand jobs that we hear most often from area employers. Jeremy and I met very recently with the Ready Mix.
Mm-hmm. The folks up here at, uh, Jay Johnson and Mike Schmidt.
And, and the first.
Already Ideal.
Ideal, thank you, I was having a moment of, what is the name of that company? It's, it's common, a little bit, it's Ideal Ready Mix. And, and one of the first things that they talked about as far as, uh, workforce was, we need drivers, we need drivers, we need drivers, we need drivers. Uh, and so, um, you'll see that that is one of the things on slide ten that we talk to the students about, uh, and I, I actually, um, asked the students, how long do you think it takes to receive a certification to be a CDL driver? And I've had students raise their hands and say, two years? No, not two years. Come down a little bit, one year, and then they're surprised to find out, six weeks. If you're eighteen years of age, you, uh, have a clean, uh, substance record, you know, you're not on drugs or alcohol, and you'll show up and do a good job, you can get a CDL or a Class B with endorsements and be doing something like driving a cement truck and making a very, very good wage doing it at eighteen, nineteen, twenty years of age. And that opens up the door for the CDL if you wanna drive, you know, the, the bigger rigs, which offer even, uh, greater opportunity. There is so much excitement in the classroom when you see the light bulb go on and a student go, whoa, I mean, I could make forty or fifty thousand dollars a year and I don't even need two years of education. For some students, that's really exciting for them to hear. The, the one thing that we do really stress though is, you do need some credentialing beyond high school. A high school diploma's only gonna get you so far, you need to be thinking while you're in high school, what's your next step beyond high school, whether it's a credential, a two-year or a four-year, so that's a big part of our messaging.
I appreciate you coming out and giving us the, the update.
Thank you for your support and you'll be delighted coming back at any time, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone wishing to address the council matters, we are not discussing tonight, citizens' inquiries. Okay. Nobody running up to the mic, so I got a couple of proclamations that need to read and the first one is, whereas twenty twenty marks the one-hundredth anniversary of Southeastern Community College and whereas our forefathers had the vision of bringing the opportunity earning a quality higher education to residents right here in our community and making that vision a reality. And whereas since nineteen twenty, SCC has helped one hundred thousand students achieve their educational goals and make better lives for themselves, their families and their communities by being the go-to provider of an affordable, accessible, relevant college education. And whereas SCC has served as a regional leader, building the, the lives of our residents, supporting our businesses and industry and strengthening our communities for the past one hundred years, and whereas SCC contributes millions of dollars to our regional economy annually, providing high-quality jobs, buying local goods and services and helping produce talent at residents to fill vital positions, all sectors of our economy, including manufacturing, healthcare, small business, and merit of service providers, and whereas SCC continues to provide relevant, up-to-date training and learning opportunities for our area workers who in turn enable business and industry throughout the region to compete in the global marketplace, and whereas SCC serves as an organization dedicated to uniting the entire region by delivering programs and services that make all of our communities stronger together through a more educated and skilled citizenry with a shared sense of purpose of the goal of collective prosperity. And whereas, many SCC graduates have made advancement in the areas of science, technology, and medicine, achieved athletic greatness, as well as built successful businesses, and still others quietly contribute to the betterment of their communities through the quality workmanship, expertise, and care they provide every day, and now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of West Burlington, that the council takes great pleasure in congratulating Southeastern Community College on the celebration of its one-hundredth anniversary of providing higher education to all residents of West Burlington and our surrounding communities by declaring this, the twenty-first day of February as Southeastern Community College Day in the city of West Burlington. That's the first one, and they're quite lengthy. Second proclamation, and I do, they're both, they both pertain to the college and I do wanna congratulate them on their one-hundredth anniversary, and I mean, they've been in, you know, an excellent addition, addition to the last almost fifty years of being out here. Whereas, February first through twenty-nine, twenty twenty has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, and whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employable skills necessary for true career readiness, and whereas students in career and technical education programs participate in worker-based learning experiences that improve the quality of their education, increase their engagement and achievement, and enable students to make informed decisions about their career path. Whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE, CTE-related fields, and whereas Southeastern Community College provides degree, diploma, and certificate programs to prepare students for one of the nearly one thousand unfilled, high-wage, high-demand positions in the local workforce. SCC's programs range from welding, agriculture, construction, construction, industrial maintenance, network administration, cybersecurity, nursing, respiratory therapy, accounting, business administration, automotive technology, collision repair and restoration, advanced automation and robotics, animation, entrepreneurship, interactive, and social media marketing, medical billing and coding, medical assistant, emergency medical services, medical scribe, pharmacy technician, occupational therapy assistant, precision machining and CNC technology, computer aided design, and nurse aide. Whereas career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized conden- credentials. And whereas career and technical education programs ensure that employers have access to qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is a strong competitive economy. Now therefore, I, Hans Kate Trousell, Mayor of the City of West Burlington, Des Moines County, do hereby proclaim February first through twenty-ninth, twenty twenty as Career and Technical Education Month in the city of West Burlington. In the city of West Burlington, urge all citizens become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs in this community and to support and participate in these programs to enhance their individual skills and productivity. And I thank SEC. New business. I'm number one, is consider resolution approving agreement between the city of West Burlington and Burlington area YMCA. And Gina's here to answer any questions. Do you wanna come up or?
Can you come up real quick and give you a recap?
Cool, that'd be fine.
Good evening, I'm Gina Crabtree, CEO of the Burlington Y. I've been with the Y for twenty-eight years and in the CEO position for the past three years. Uh, this is Jenna Cafrey. She is our Sports and Wellness Director at the Y, and she is the direct report of the Aquatics Director, Aquatics Coordinator. Uh, so just a few highlights of two thousand nineteen. We implemented some season passes. Um, I believe that the city of West Burlington had done that in the past. Uh, that worked out really nicely for us. They had to purchase the season passes at the YMCA, and then we took pictures through our DEXCO system that we have, so we had photographs of them when they came into the pool. Uh, we had two teen nights. The teen nights uh were very popular the last couple of years. Uh, this last year, we did divide the nights up into um a middle school teen night and then a high school teen night with over three hundred and twenty-five kids attending. Uh, let's see here, the pool hours remained the same. Well, I believe last year we we had them from twelve-thirty to six-thirty. I think it, uh, the year prior to that, it was from one to seven. Uh, we wanted to open up just a little bit earlier, so um, we were hoping to get more people at the pool so they didn't go to, we know that Fun City opens earlier. Uh, so that that worked out really nicely for us. I think that people really enjoyed that. Um, let's see here. And one uh new thing that we did is we had pool play dates. So we opened up, was it a half hour early or forty-five minutes early?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty? Two hours? Two hours for one adult and two children, um, under six years of age to come in and enjoy the pool for for eight dollars for the one parent and two children. Uh, new for two thousand twenty, we have hired uh an aquatic coordinator. We hired the coordinator last fall. Uh, so the coordinator will oversee the pool operations at West Burlington Pool. Uh, we will be adding one more session of swim lessons. We had four sessions last summer. Uh, a new thing that we started doing is if the weather was bad, we would just bring them over to the Y pool, so then that way they didn't have to make up any lessons. So parents knew that they'd have their two-week session of lessons with with no weather uh cancellations. So we added an extra session of that. Um, we are considering making a confer- a conversion to a different software system. We currently operate over at the Y with our DEXCO system, so we are seeing if we're able to do that over at the West Burlington Pool. And that would also enable us to use um a credit for the people that come in, use their credit cards. Uh, the grand opening for this year would be May twenty-third, and I just kinda wanna let you know of a rule change that we did make a couple of years ago. Uh, we implemented where uh if a parent came in with a child six years old or younger, uh, that child has to be wrist-banned when they come in, and the child has to be arms distance away from their parent or an adult that's eighteen years old or older. So that's just a few updates of what we've done.
Well, um, Gina, I'm glad you're you're here to to update us. I haven't seen you guys since you took over the pool. Um, and being in the medical profession, you know, um, we always hear on Facebook and all the other stuff about how many near misses and stuff like that, and they don't give you credit for saving the two kids last year. They just made a hop and a skip jump through my department and we sent them up because they needed closer monitoring. But I'm just wondering, you know, cause it's like, what can we do to help these kids that don't have swim lessons? More more than likely, the parents drop them off and they're gone for the day. And I didn't know if there was a way that, you know, we could purchase like life vests that they, you know, they have that opportunity to rent a life vest for the day if they don't know how to swim. And if they don't, they can sign a waiver so that somewhere we're we're taking control of the situation, saying, okay, all right, your 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 child doesn't swim. We recommend a life vest, some sort of buoyancy. And if you don't wanna do it, then you can't badmouth me on Facebook. I mean, somehow or another, I don't know, we gotta put a better spin on this because they all say, wow, all the lifeguards are on their phones and da-da-da-da-da, and I'm like, it's very hard for me not to get on that conversation and say, look, people, I've been there, I know it.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't, I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, um, that that's something that we definitely can look into, um, to see, you know, what the, what, if there's other aquatics, you know, departments that are other, you know, YMCA or city pools, if they do, you know, rent out life jackets. Um, so def- or not rent out, but you know, let them borrow them for the day, so we can definitely look into that. I will say that that we did have, um, the YMCA, the USA Aquatic Specialists come in a couple of years ago just to look at the pool, um, to let us know, okay, are there some areas, you know, what can we do to make sure that we're operating this pool as as safely as possible? So a couple of things that they recommended, obviously, was that new uh rule change with the six years, six years old and younger with the wristbands. And the other thing was was the, um, the diving board area. Um, it would be safer to not have both diving boards open at the same time, so we do close one down where the swimmers don't have to swim in front of the other diving board. So we did do that, and then we rotate every twenty minutes. Um, but we were fine with our rotations, you know, just making sure we're rescue-ready and so forth. Um, and with with pools such as the zero-depth entry, that's the area that's that, you know, people don't realize that, um, you know, it's it's getting deeper, so just having somebody in that water, in the water there in that area. So we did increase our our lifeguards just to be safer in that aspect. Um, you know, it's hard for us not to respond when, on Facebook, but obviously, you know, we don't wanna do that when they, when people say, well, you know, they weren't doing their job or in this and that, you know, because we want, you know, parents need to supervise their kids when they're there. However, they don't always do that. So we, you know, our staff just need to make sure that they're rescue-ready and um, you know, always scanning that water, and they get their appropriate breaks that they need. Uh, but I most definitely can look into that. Uh, I don't, I would have to research it. Do you know anything? Have you heard of any other aquatic facilities that may?
No, I guess I, one of the scenarios, I think, was a kid that could swim. You know, so like, whatever efforts we do make, there's always that scenario that we can run into. You know, with life vests or not, cause it was a kid, he was in an area that he was able to be in. And was, I mean, swimming most of the day in that area and just takes a quick minute of something, of some water of another kid of something for.
Oh, oh, I know. Oh, I know. And then the other thing, um, I know you guys run the concession stand, and I don't know, do you ever go to the vending thing up in Des Moines? What was that vending thing that we went to initially? Yeah. Cause they were like, what more than just what you have?
Sure, yeah. That's something that we we started looking into last year is, you know, what, you know, what else can we have there? And so we are looking at that, maybe something a little bit more healthier. Uh, we had talked about possibly, you know, deli sandwiches or something like that, but we've never been to Des Moines though, to to Farnerbaken. Um, I think, didn't they used to do pre-sales of before, like you could order food and get a discount on it?
You go to the show, you can order stuff and get a ri- a huge discount on it.
Sure, sure.
They have, I mean, they have deli sandwiches that are
Do they?
ready to go, and, I mean, it's worth going, just
Yeah, yeah.
idea of what's out there.
Sure, and that's, that's in.
Until you said the word healthy, I was gonna tell you, we have a fryer, a fat fryer downstairs that we used to have over there. That's just sitting there right now.
Yeah, cause didn't we buy all the equipment that you had a cheeseburger or hamburger and like?
The french fries were huge. We sold a lot of french fries out of that machine.
Even if you used it just to make french fries, they were a huge moneymaker.
So so you're hearing like a more variety of of food and, okay, that's great feedback.
Like, cheeseburgers or hamburgers, you know. Turkey burgers if you wanna throw it in, or veggie burgers, but, you know, you know, cause kids, they'll eat more, they'll spend more money on that than
Yeah.
the other stuff.
Well, one year we had hamburgers, french fries, and grilled chickens, and we threw the grilled chickens away at the end of the year, cause we sold like two.
Really?
Hmm.
So, unless it's their chicken strips or nuggets, yeah, they don't sell, but, and then, I don't know, do we still have that ice cream machine that we put the little pot in and it squirted out?
No, that that lasted about two years and it broke and they went out of business.
Oh.
They even have, even at the show, they had a lot of op- healthy options, a lot of
Yeah.
fruit options.
Sure. Yeah, that's something else that we talked about too, was 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 some, you know, fruit cups.
They have a lot, lots of stuff like that, too.
Gina, do you think that we could ever partner between the city and the Y and the schools to where every kid learns how to swim? I mean, we got the Mississippi River three miles away, and there's no excuse that not every kid knows how to swim. And my thoughts have always been, we got this pool sitting over here. It usually closes about the middle of August. We got hot weather, usually through September, and school starts, you know, end of August, September. Why not get those kids from kindergarten on over to this pool and start teaching them how to swim?
Yeah, I I love that idea. What we do currently do is is we offer free swim lessons to to second graders in the area. Um, so the school districts, they they transport the kids over to the Y.
They do? I didn't know that.
Yes, yes. Um, I don't think that West Burlington has, uh, I don't think that they've they've taken the lessons. Burlington has, Notre Dame has, um, I believe either Minneapolis or New London. We have reached out to West Burlington. I don't know if it was the transportation issue or not. Um, but we have funding for that. So, um, it's free to them. They just have to provide the transportation. Uh, it's, I believe, from one o'clock, around one to one-thirty is, if, depending on how many kids are in the class, sometimes they have to divide them up into two groups. But one group is from one to one-thirty or one-forty-five, and then the second group is right after that.
Well, I I'm thinking even after school.
Uh-huh.
Like, you know, school gets out at three-thirty, and if we can get the guards, you know, the guards are, the guards are always an issue.
Right, right.
Once, once August hits.
Yeah, sure.
If you can get the guards and then you get those smaller kids over to the pool after school and teach them how to swim. Cause, you know, in my stupid younger days, I swam across that Mississippi a couple of times.
Yeah.
One side to the next, and I wouldn't wanna do that again, no, but, uh.
No.
I'll have the rowboat for you.
We'll definitely reach out to to the, um, elementary school principals again and see if that might be something that they wanna do, cause we.
And I mean, and we, I would suppose that, you know, the majority of the people up here would probably support that if we, if we could help with funding or stuff like that.
Sure, sure. Yep, we can look at the schedule.
About having them come during the end of August?
Well, I'm think, well, yeah, I'm, you know, it's it's ninety-degree days sometimes in the end of August and September where, you know, we're closing the pool. What's what's gonna be the final day? You gave us the opening day.
Let's see, do I have?
Probably gonna be August fifteenth or something around there.
I, yeah, I guess I don't have that. I'm sorry, I don't have that, the final day that it closes, but it's usually the, the.
Second week of August.
Middle of August.
Yeah, middle of August, cause the kids all go back to college, and once they get in school, if they're a high school student, um, you know, we're not able to to find any lifeguard, so when school starts, college starts.
Now, I'm even thinking about, you know, maybe some demand, there might be some teachers that could, you know, get lifeguard, lifeguard certifications that might be able to help out. Something to kick around.
Sure.
You know, other than making a big litter box out of the place.
We could get a dome.
Gina, I wanted to take just a second and and thank you for coming here tonight, and then I think the the partnership with the Y has been great for our pool, for our city, for for our residents, so thank you very much for for the work you've done there. It stayed very clean, well-kept. Um, I agree with with other council members that I think more food options would be great. I actually was in charge of Fun City marketing and advertising for the first couple of years, and we would let people in free and make a ton of money off the the food side of them, so I know if there's some work there that can be done, great for our residents and probably better on your profit side too, so.
Sure.
Otherwise, it sounds like the teen nights were a hit, so hopefully you folks will continue to look for for things like that, and I think that's good to kinda have those targeted days for our youth here, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Do you have those dates that you can send to Gina for Farnerbaken?
Uh, probably can find out. Haven't, they they quit sending us stuff since we quit going, but.
I'll see if we can. Okay, we have his contact, so I can ask.
Yeah, that'd be the best way to do it, cause they'll give you tickets, they'll get your tickets to get in, so you have to deal with your salesperson, so.
Okay.
That's your best way to get there.
Okay.
Let me know when you go, Gina, cause I'll go help you try out.
Okay.
They'll help me and I'll take, I'll I'll sacrifice my cholesterol on the others.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Makes my stomach hurt just thinking about that.
So I need a motion to approve the.
Slow move.
Resolution.
Support.
Yeah, a motion with support. Is there any further discussion? Rule call.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Kent Meyer.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number two, is consider pre-annexation agreement between the city of West Burlington and BK BK Land Incorporated.
This is for a potential, uh, annexation of, uh, the ground just north of Emerald Glen where that pond is. Um, Kenny Schwenker wants to build, what is it, ten or eleven lots, something like, something like that out there and.
Thirteen lots, but eleven of them would be.
Eleven, yeah, eleven lots would be come into the city with, uh, um, that development, I think, are gonna be pretty decent price housing, so, uh, and this is just the first step in annexation of what we both agree to do. Um, basically, we're agreeing to let them, uh, dump into the lift station at Emerald Glen and us run a a line from that lift station to their property line, and then the developer's responsible for all the rest of the infrastructure. Um, I'm sure he'll be asking for a TIF rebate agreement to get some of that back, but that's gonna depend on his, how fast he develops and what his, what his housing he develops actually generates for taxes in ten years, so the city's not out anything. He'll just get some of his tax money he generates back to pay for some of that infrastructure, but we aren't, we aren't quite there yet. We just, we just agree that we'll do a rebate agreement after we get it annexed.
Do we have any idea what it would cost to do the water and sewer? No.
Um, it's not, it's a pretty short distance.
It's like this much, this much.
I don't know, what is it for?
It'd be length of a yard back there, but I hadn't discussed with you, but we need to also come back through a different yard. I mean, we need to make that a loop and not a dead end. So it'd be two connections to the water system. And I'm not sure how deep them lots are.
That one plan that he had, uh, seen a year or so ago, wasn't the water line gonna run through a lot in Emerald Glen?
That was the sewer.
There's an easement for the sewer, and I think they're, I'm not sure where the, where they've got the water coming from.
I haven't seen that map.
All the internal stuff, the developer's responsible for, so we're just responsible for bringing it to the lot line. And that's, that's the typical arrangement. The city brings it to the develop, to the edge of the development, and then the developer pays for it and.
When the, uh, planning zoning commission looks at the preliminary plat, they'll have some preliminary construction drawings to go along with it.
So initially, is he gonna do eight new homes instead of eleven?
I'm not sure how many lots he has sold. I know just a. I'm not sure how many lots he has sold. I know just a couple that, for sure.
I know, I said eight in my...
Mm-hmm.
That's been, that's been sorta flexible, as he changes. Um, so, eight to eleven.
So, what does he anticipate running the price on these houses? I mean, are they gonna be like a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
His house will be a lot. Now, what the rest of them are, I don't know. Um, he's talked about having some of his relatives buy some of those, so I'm guessing those will be pretty decent houses, too. Um, I would guess they'd be comparable to the Emerald Glen houses, which are, which are assessed pretty, pretty high.
I think the eight came from, because the way he has it drawn out, three of those lots are gonna be landlocked unless they are extending. I think he's gonna talk to, like, three different owners in Emerald Glen about adding on to the...
Alright, so I think there'll be actually eight houses.
So, it would be more like eight houses.
Eight houses. And this is just, uh, the pre-annexation agreement to, for him to voluntary annex the ground into the city, which I think is beneficial for us.
How long does the full annexation take?
You know, I haven't done one since I've been here, so it, it, there's some legal back and forth, and it has to go to the State Development Board in Des Moines to approve it, and it, I mean, it's not a, it's not a overnight thing. It takes, it takes a little while.
What's your best guess?
I'd say six to eight months.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Is there any other discussion?
What's the next piece we'll see from this?
Well, I've been working with the attorney. There's just so many working parts to it, but we do have a preliminary plat that the pl- the planning zoning commission will look at. I'm waiting for the construction drawings that go with that. Um, and then I'll bring the preliminary plat to you guys as they've approved it, and in the meantime, we'll be s- probably sending out some notices to the county and to adjoining property owners about the, the annexation, and then there'd be some public hearings that go along with that.
Okay.
Back and forth.
But until it's annexed, we won't start the water sewer project?
Right. And he kinda wants to know, if he, if he does his voluntary annexation, are we gonna do this part? 'Cause it kinda makes a big difference for him and that commitment, so...
Yeah, it'd be nice if people trusted each other without legal documents, but that isn't how it works, so we have to promise to do it, and he promises the annex, and we go from there. But, yeah, we won't. At one point, at one point, this document did say that we would do that before the annexation, and I was like, no, we're not. Because if you decide not to do it, then we've got a, a stub of sewer to nowhere that we can't use it, 'cause we wouldn't let anybody hook up. That's outside the city limits, so with sewer.
My only other question is, I'm not sure I saw any timeline that said he had to do anything by any certain timeframe. Is it, is there anything that we have on this?
Um, as far as the development goes, that'll be in the, that will be in a- as part of the development agreement and the, and the TIF rebate agreement. Um, it's gonna, we'll explain to him that in a residential TIF, that he has ten years of possible, so it, it benefits him to get stuff built as quick as possible, and, 'cause once he's past the ten years, he's done. He doesn't get any more off of that, and if he doesn't have enough to pay for all that stuff, that, because he hasn't developed houses quick enough, he's just out. I mean, it's, we pay, we're not bound to a certain dollar amount, because he has to generate it, so it's what he generates. There'll be a not to, a, not to an exceed amount, and we'll have him, um, give us receipts or whatever till we know what those cost, so we're not giving him extra. I doubt whether that would be a problem anyway, 'cause it normally isn't for residential, but we will keep an eye on that as well, so... This is just the agreement of who does what for the annexation. The development stuff and the details of all that will come in later agreements.
Roll call.
Christie?
Aye.
Your Honor?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion passed. I'm number three, is consider sup- uh, supplemental engineering services agreement with Snyder and Associates for the replacement of additional water main outside of Lewis Park sponsored project area. About, uh, amount of about twelve thousand five hundred dollars and four hundred and sixty foot of eight-inch main.
And this, in that, uh, sponsored project, they were to put the permio pavers on the end of Meadow Street, they were gonna lo- they would have to lower that water main, and we've been having all kinds of trouble with that thing breaking in a bunch of spots, so we decided why we had a contractor in there. It would be time to replace that, so this is an added project. That won't be part of that sponsored project. Um, we'll have to pay that another way. Um, I think, wh- what did we say, we were gonna do local option tax? I don't remember. We talked about it at one time.
That water main?
Yeah.
Or we're using water revenue?
Oh, water revenue, okay. Um, so, and this is just the engineering agreement for them to design the, the additional stuff outside of that sponsored project.
And I'm assuming this is something that we'll hire out? You guys won't do it?
No, that's what he's saying. The contractors that are gonna do it for the other project, why they have it exposed and they have it cut off, and they're in, you know, they're already on site to have them take the rest of that out and replace it, 'cause we have so many clamps and so many bricks, and that'll ductile, it's, it's a section that needs to be put into plastic, and why they've already got it cut open and are working on it, just to, uh, extend it on out and get rid of that bad section, why they're working there.
Is that cast iron main down there, or is that...
Ductile. Similar to cast iron.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Honor?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number four, is consider setting a public hearing date of March eighteen, twenty-twenty at six P.M. to consider pros bu- to propose budget for fiscal twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Your Honor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number five, is consider purchase of street sweeper from Red Municipal Industrial Equipment in the amount of two-hundred-and-five thousand five hundred dollars. It's, uh, twenty-eighteen, and it has a five-year warranty, and you get a few things with it.
It's a whole ser- all the filters, several hundred dollars worth of filters and everything for the first service on it.
Say what? Is your mic on?
Several hundred dollars worth of filters for the first service?
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
Congratulations on your negotiating skills. You will now be a part of the contract.
When will it be delivered?
I, sitting there waiting, honestly. I had him hold it for us, so I would assume within a week or, less than a week, or not long to get here.
When do I get to drive it?
I can call you when he's coming, 'cause he'll be here the whole day to do training. We can train you.
Awesome.
You won't be able to reach the pedals.
I've got a pillow. Don't forget my cup holder.
He's probably too heavy to be driving around in your yard picking up your leaves, so you might get his back.
No power steering? What?
Roll call.
Please? Hi, Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Your Honor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. I'm number six, is to consider resolution setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Garry Burlington Partnership, including annual appropriation tax increment payments, which is five thousand a year up to twenty-five thousand.
This is so we can use TIF for our, uh, contribution for the, uh, part, the partnering for the future that we, that the previous council agreed to do. Um, and this will just make it so we don't have to do an internal loan every year. That this agreement will serve as debt a- a- for TIF, 'cause if you remember, this last year, we had to do an internal loan for the first five thousand, but the, there, the next, uh, four payments, we won't need to do that. We can just pay it directly out of TIF with this, using this agreement as debt.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Your Honor?
Aye.
Knight Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Are we having old business? Anyone wishing to address the council matters that we did or didn't discuss tonight? Well, entertain a motion adjourned.
Second. Support.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.